Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Amherst School Committee to order at 6:30 PM on March 19th. I'm Sarah Marshall. Because some of the, some members of the committee are joining us remotely, I need to take the attendance and all votes by roll call. So when I call your name, please unmute yourself and say that you are present and we'll know we can hear each other. Irv Rhodes.
Present.
Bridget Hines.
Present.
Jennifer Chau.
Present.
Deb Leonard.
Present.
And of course, I am present also, so we are all here. First order of business is to review some minutes, just two sets. We had already accepted the, approved the February 13th minutes, although they may not have been publicly posted yet. So first, we should have February 15. Is Debbie up there?
She is.
Okay. All right. All right. So does anyone have any comments on the minutes of our meeting on Thursday, February 15? Debbie, I do have one under new and continuing business, item A in the bullet list. I think in the third bullet, two items are combined, so you need to put a, make, please explain the roles of the Joint Capital Planning Committee, that sentence, its own bullet. Any other comments, Irv or Bridget?
No comments from me.
All right. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Okay. I don't want to rush anyone if you haven't finished. Wait, we're good? Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All right. All in favor, say aye by roll call. Jennifer?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Deb?
Aye.
Bridget?
Aye.
And Irv?
Aye.
Thank you. You're approved unanimously. Now to the minutes of March 4th. Under the call to order, please change the wording that I, that I took attendance by roll call. There was no vote during the attendance. And I would make my usual, usual comment about breaking up large paragraphs, just for ease of reading, that would be under new and continuing business, item A. No? Can I have a motion to approve then?
I move we approve the March 4th, 2024 minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Again, we'll vote to approve by roll call. Irv?
Yes.
Bridget? I think you're muted.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Deb?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Five to zero. Okay. So now to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment? All right. We have several phone messages. Bear with me, I'm trying to make it audible.
Hi, this is Allegra Clark. I am a parent of a Wildwood first grader, and I am calling to say thank you for restoring the cuts to the Amherst Elementary School's special education, music, and preschool programs. I really appreciate it, and I think these are important programs for our kids. So again, thank you for voting for the budget to restore these cuts.
Hi, this is Ariel Hamilton. I'm the band director at Carrot Farm, Fort River, and Wildwood Elementary School. I'm also a parent in the district and an Amherst resident. I'm just calling to thank the school committee for their support of the instrumental program at the elementary school and the special ed positions that were slated to be cut. Thank you for reinstating these positions. It means a great deal to the students who are served by these programs, and it means a great deal to the teachers who are working in the programs. We can't say enough just how grateful we are that you recognize just how important the instrumental music program is, not only to the elementary schools, but the entire district. And we look forward to making music with the students of Amherst for years to come. Thanks again for your support.
Hi, this is Nina Mankin, calling to the comment line for the Amherst School Board. And I just want to thank you all for the incredible hard work that you're doing. My child is a sixth grader at Wildwood, and I am very grateful for you working so hard to get the music and the para positions back in. And I'll reiterate that I think these are incredibly vital positions, and particularly for me, the music program needs to be bolstered, not cut any further. And if we do cut it any further, as we have all spoken about many times, it will destroy this program that we all are proud of and value so much. So thank you for voting on the budget with those positions intact, and thank you again for all of your incredible hard work. Bye.
Hello, I am calling for, to make a public comment on, regarding tonight's school committee meeting and the budget vote. My name is Britt Rusert, R-U-S-E-R-T. My phone number is 919-636-0415, and I live at 43 Baker Street. I am just calling to voice my support for the reinstatement of the music and position, as well as the decision to not cut special ed, the special ed program in the budget. And I was just calling to say that I hope that you support and vote on this current budget. Thank you very much.
This is the final one.
Hi, this is Maria Koticki, Amherst resident. I'm speaking to ask the Amherst School Committee to approve the authorization of proprietary items for the new school as requested by the elementary school building committee. I hope that you've had a chance to read the email I sent to you that contains a lot more detail, so I will try to be brief in these verbal comments. The building committee and its professional partners are asking you to authorize several proprietary items for the project. This has come to your committee because the authorization must be voted on by an elected body, rather than an appointed body such as the building committee. One of the items in the list is a playground surface called corkine. The building committee has spent considerable time deliberating about playground servicing, and this issue has also been taken up by other municipal bodies. The Amherst Board of Health was asked to offer its analysis, and after consulting with the Toxic Use Reduction Institute at UMass Lowell and doing their own research, they advised against the use of rubber poured in place. The Amherst Conservation Commission also studied this issue as part of the required permitting process for construction. They stated unequivocally that they would not approve of the use of rubber poured in place, but instead recommended cork poured in place as an acceptable material. Happily, corkine provides the desired safety and accessibility of a unitary surface and avoids the human and environmental health risks of chrome rubber. I hope that you will vote favorably on this request as this exciting project moves closer to reality. Thank you so much.
That's the end of the recorded comments. You lost your screen.
Yeah, it's bad.
Oh, it's different. Okay, thank you.
Just want to make sure it's showing up in the meeting. Did it share? Didn't share. Let me try that again.
Oh, good.
It's better. It doesn't want to share on the, on the, on the Google Meet, so I'm going to have to, maybe do a real quick thing here first, sorry.
The comments have been posted to the agenda. They're publicly available. If Bridget or Irv were able to, can they share their screens? Would that work?
Potentially, yeah, but the, let me do the following. Let me see if I attach it to the meeting. Nope, that's not what I wanted.
Can I email it to?
I just took a second.
Has to be somebody in the meeting. I'm not in that. Let's try. Now, if we can't get it shared soon, why don't we try again at the end of this meeting?
Really doesn't like this file, so.
Okay.
I'll have to try it a little, little bit later.
All right. Apologies. In that case, we will move on to superintendent's update, if he has one.
I do not.
I posted a very brief update to the meeting, and I just wanted to clarify something, well, and I'll, and I'll read the whole thing, basically. Next week, Tuesday, March 26th, at 3:30 is the formal, or the ceremonial groundbreaking for the new elementary school. The community is invited to that. Again, 3:30 at the school on Tuesday, March 26th. And then the second item was to note that I spoke to Representative Dom last week about budget matters and asked if she'd be willing to attend a forum with community members, hopefully also with Senator Comerford. And I wrote, she suggests, and she's happy to do that, I wrote, she suggests doing this after the FY '25 budget is passed. I mean, the state budget, not our budget. So probably not before the fall. Okay? That's all. And I didn't, yes?
I have a question about your first item.
Yeah.
I'm excited, and I'm going to attend the groundbreaking. What, what exactly is a ceremonial groundbreaking, and like, how are we breaking ground when we don't have a, we haven't gone out to bid yet? Like, what is the, what is a ceremonial groundbreaking?
Well, my understanding is there will be shovels and a pile of dirt.
Okay.
And we, I don't know that we dig, but we lift and toss, toss dirt.
Okay.
Deb?
I think Margaret has a sense of what's going to be happening that day.
All right. And, and, all right. So I'll invite Margaret Wood, who's our, the owner, our owner's project manager for the project, to tell us more, if there's additional detail. But maybe not.
No, sorry, I was trying to find the unmute button. Hi, everybody. So yes, I'm Margaret Wood. I'm the owner's project manager, and I also want to introduce Rick Rice and Tim Cooper here, who are here with Denisco Design to give you an update on the project. But the short answer to the question is, we have bid part of the project. So the site is being bid in two pieces. One is what's called the early site package, which is, you could think of it as enabling work for the building package. Building will be bid in the summer. So, but we do have a contractor on site at this point, and for those who are at Fort River, they have begun to see activities. And so we wanted to take the opportunity of this moment, especially as we sort of, that, you know, the end of the school year is sort of off in the distance to, to celebrate that. So that is what's going to happen, and yes, it is a little silly in the sense that we're putting a pile of dirt down for a bunch of people with shovels to sort of throw dirt in the air, but it's still, it's a great moment to celebrate, and it, it does represent the kickoff for the, the project.
Thank you. And no one submitted any committee updates, but if you remembered something?
No, my, my committee, I'm on the Amherst Elementary School Building Committee, so everything that you're going to hear today is essentially.
Is your update.
My update, yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, so we can go to our new business. I would propose, unless anyone here objects, that we first go to the new elementary school business and not keep our guests waiting. Does anyone object to that? No? Okay. So I will first ask Margaret to introduce this item, and then, I mean, just explain what it is that we are being asked to do tonight, and then I think we will have just an update for, for us and for the public about the project in general. Okay? Oh, Doug wishes to speak.
If we can just pause for a moment.
Yeah.
I'm going to exit the meeting and re-enter the meeting and see if I can, can present, because I'm having trouble presenting anything at this point, and so I, I want to make sure to, that when we get to the slide deck, we'll be able to do that, so.
Why don't we take, why don't we take a five, two, three-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay. We're in recess then. Thank you.
And I suspect that Tim, Tim does as well, so let's, should we just get launched, perhaps?
Yeah, Margaret, can you share your screen? Do you have that permission?
Yeah. Let me look here.
Point of order, while we're waiting, can I just say something? I just want to explain to our online guests that the camera through which you see us is like right in front of us, but the screen where we see your faces is off to the side. So if we're like talking that way, that's because like we're talking to your faces, even though it doesn't look like we are.
Can everybody see this?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Proceed.
Okay.
All right. So we're back in session.
So again, what we wanted to do tonight was to take an opportunity to give a little bit of an update on the project. I know that a number of, some of the folks on this committee have seen previous presentations, some of you have not, so this is kind of bringing you up to speed. It's good, it's a good time, given the fact that, as Sarah said, we're about to have a groundbreaking, but there's also a, an important role that the school committee has at this point that we're going to talk about. So most of, this presentation is mostly, I'm going to be done by Denisco Design, but just as a reminder of the, the overall schedule for the project, we have started construction with the early site package. The building will be built, will be bid in the summer. The goal is to have the building open for use, the new building, for use in the fall of 2026, but there will be ongoing construction and working, including demolition of the existing school and other site work that will go right through to the beginning of 2027 and end of 2026. So that's the overall schedule that you should anticipate. Tim and Rick, I'm going to turn this over to you to explain, but I just want to note that where we're getting to at the end of this is that there are a series of proprietary items which the folks who are in the district, and in this case, I'm mostly thinking of Rupert, but also to some degree, the fire department in Amherst, want to use that are what are so-called proprietary products. And the school committee has a role here because you, you need to hear what those are and hopefully support what those folks have asked for by voting to confirm the use of the proprietary specifications when the project is bid in the summer. Okay. So with that, I'm going to stop talking because the work that's being presented here is really Denisco's work, and Tim and Rick, you want to take it away?
Thank you, Margaret. And if, since you're presenting, if you could just advance, the first slide is just a schedule with that Margaret consistently reviewed, and that construction in earnest will be beginning in the fall, and moving date is fall of '26, but Margaret went over that, so maybe we can jump right into the project. So here is the overall site plan of the proposed project. At this point, we have been in front of and been approved by Conservation Commission and the planning board at town, so this plan is what the project is going to be. The dashed line on the northern top half of the page is where the existing school is, which will be operating while this new school is being built, and then it will be torn down after kids move in in the fall of '26. The circulation vehicles on site will operate a little bit differently than they do now at Fort River. The southern entrance will be for buses and service vehicles only, and vans, and they will come in and drop off at the main entry plaza or the southern side of the building.
And.
And then the north entrance to the site will be for staff and parents. The drop-off and pickup loop and circulation for cars will be through the parking lot, south to the main entrance of the building, which is on the west side, and then out north along, exiting through the same entrance that they came in. The red triangle at the west of the building indicates the main entrance, where the two drop-off loops sort of converge. And then circling around the building clockwise, the north of the building is the playground. And there's an outdoor eating area, which is just north of the cafeteria on that west side of the building, which you'll see when we'll get into the plans. And then moving clockwise around the building, there is a hardscape play area, basketball courts for recess, and a couple of full-size basketball courts to the east of the building. And then in addition to the place surfaces, there are outdoor educational opportunities all the way to the right of the site. At the elevation of the building, there is a forest floor garden, which can be integrated into the science curriculum for the students. Southeast of the building, there is an area for planter beds. There is also a pollinator garden, which, with native plant species. And there's a pavilion, which is sized for an entire classroom of children to be outside and learning with the teacher, you know, in the shade. And then north of these amenities, there are athletic fields for use during kids' during gym and for the town at large when school is not in session, for all of the various groups that use the fields at Fort River now for games and practice. Over the parking lot, there, you see a series of blue dash lines. That's where there will be canopy-mounted photovoltaics, which will contribute to making this a net-zero building. And some of those PV canopies will be over at the drop-off area for parents and the drop-off area for vans south of the building. If you could go to the next slide, Margaret. Now, this is just a little bit of a zoomed-in view that shows the pedestrian paths that run adjacent to the bus drop-off loop. And there is a corridor in the north of the site.
Excuse me.
And that.
Hasn't, has it advanced?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's the same, it's almost identical, it's just zoomed in a little bit.
Zoomed in, okay.
Yeah. And, and then this is just to show the paths that could be used for non-school users that circulate around the entire site. Next slide, yes. Now, moving into the building. The main entrance, at the left of the page, you have a secure vestibule that will be controlled by the office staff, that will allow only people who should be in the building, in the building. Immediately to your right, to the bottom of the page, as you come into the entrance, is the main administration, where you'll be greeted. Opposite that, in the main lobby, is the music room and suite of practice areas. And then just immediately to the right of that, in, on the top, in the over color, is the cafeteria and the gymnasium in red to the south. So all of the spaces that could be used by the public at large are very close and accessible to the main entrance. And then moving east in the building, to the right of the page, the gray area is where the service entrance is. And then moving further past the stair in the center of the building, there is a set of doors that can separate and secure the academic part of the building from the sometimes public part. And then you move into the classrooms. And there are two classrooms per grade. On the first floor is kindergarten and first grade. And interspersed within the classrooms are the SE rooms. Outside of each cluster of classrooms, five per grade, there are what we call project areas. It's areas that are off of the corridor for pull-out education and group work project grouped by the students. And in addition to that, there are also small group rooms with additional acoustic privacy spread throughout the building on each floor. We move to the next plan, will be on the second floor. On the second floor, we have the media center, the library, at the west end of the building. And then adjacent to that, we have an STE room, Science, Technology, and Engineering, and the art classroom. So those are additional spaces that will be used by all students. And then moving to the right again, the classrooms on all three floors of the building stack. So on first floor, we had kindergarten and first grade. And on the second floor, we have second grade and third grade in a similar layout to the classrooms on the first floor. And then if we move to the third floor. On the third floor, we have fourth and fifth grade. And again, the layout is similar. We also have, to the west end of the building, the mechanical spaces and the literacy specialists and the literacy library rounding out the program. Now, moving to exterior views of the building. Here we are approaching from the southwest. So you would be in the van drop-off lane off of the bus loop south of the building. You can see the PV canopies that provide cover for people dropping off in the van lane. And then the, you're looking, there are some plantings in the way, but directly at the main entrance of the building with the orange canopy marking the entrance. You can see bike racks there and a ten-foot wide sidewalk that is wide enough for, you know, walkers and bikers to access the school in addition to people coming by bus and car and van. If we move to the next slide, I believe we'll get a better view of the front entrance. So that will be staffed during drop-off and pickup. There is a large pedestrian-focused project plaza in front of the building, so people can gather and, and drop off and, you know, make it a, a bike and pedestrian and human-focused space in front of the building. And then looking north, you can see the PV canopies that are over the parent drop-off lane and the parking lot itself. And then moving to the next slide, we're moving past the building to the north, looking back at it. So here we are, a little bit northwest of the playground, looking at the north elevation of the building. To the left side, you can see the rhythm of the classrooms. And to the right, you have large, north-facing glazed spaces, which is the media center, the library on the second floor, and the cafeteria on the first floor. So with that large amount of glass facing north, you have lots of daylight, but it's glare-free, so that it's a very pleasant spaces to be in. And then from the cafeteria on the first floor, you can go directly outside to the playground, which you can see to the left of the image. And then if we go to the next slide. Here we are, looking from a little bit above. So you can see the relationship of the playground to the building itself. And the space between there, a space between the trees and the building for outdoor seating. And then between the playground and that first row of trees, there is space for games on hardscape, four-square and other lined games on the playground. And then you get the playground itself to the north, which is a soft surface. And then there's playground equipment that we've had in-depth discussions with the educators about, up until last week. And then there's another row of trees just south of the playground to provide shade. And then in the distance, you can see the other play and site amenities, the half-court basketball courts. Next slide, please. As another view, moving west, this gives you a better view of the classroom wing. The exterior materials of the building are largely masonry. It's a cost-effective and very durable material. And we have accents of color with some glazed CMU around the classroom windows that give you those bands of color. And at entrances and some special places in the building, we have the orange, in this view, canopies. They are made of metal panel, which you use sparingly to highlight important elements in the building. Next slide, please. Here we are, looking from the southeast. So in the foreground, you can see the planter beds and the roof structure for the outdoor classroom. So these are a couple of components of the outdoor education. All spaces outside of the building. Looking at the left of the image, you can see where the buses will drop off, right by the central stair in the building. And then to the right, another view back toward the basketball course that wrap around the building. Now, we are moving into the building. So this is the view of the lobby directly inside the vestibule. Your, the office is directly to your right, behind the glass, that is actually the principal's office. And the music room is to your left. So that is the door to the general music classroom. And then through the door that is shared with the cafeteria, there is access to three additional music practice spaces. And the stage has a operable partition that allows it to operate as a second music classroom. You can see that in the lobby, which is generously spaced, there is clear story, north-facing glass, which allows daylight throughout the building, which was one of the guiding design principles throughout the project. Next. Here's a view from inside the cafeteria. It has a stage that is eighteen inches up from the floor. So it's a design for assemblies in the elementary school and performances. And then looking to the north through the curtain wall, you can see the view of the athletic fields and the site to the north, with lots of daylight streaming through the cafeteria into the building itself and the circulation spaces within the building. Next slide, please. Directly above the cafeteria on the second floor, we have the media center. And just like the cafeteria, there's lots of glass facing north. Inside the media center, there is shelf space for the large collections that the existing combined elementary schools have and room for two classes, one set up for full technology and seating at tables, and the other for soft seating, reading. And then there are also additional tables for project learning in the media center. Next slide, please. So this is a view of the project areas outside the groups of three classrooms. You can see the space in front of the classroom doors with tables and chairs in front of the lockers. There are lockers for every student to have one. And then these areas are separated from the main corridor by a partial divider. And then in addition to these areas for pull-out work, there are learning centers and small group rooms and the doors down the corridor for testing and other pull-out functions like that. Next slide, please. Here's another view from basically looking out a classroom door into the project area. So within the project areas, there are whiteboards, furniture for small groups to work with apparel or a teacher as necessary. Next. And this is a view inside of a typical classroom. To the left, you have the teaching wall with a short throw projector and a whiteboard. We are in the process of talking about furniture with the educators and the shape that they want. But it'll be an individual desk that can be arranged as a typical classroom or pushed together as tables shown here. And then along the back wall, you can see that there's lots of storage. The white area in the middle is sliding marker boards with shelving behind it and open shelving below it. There are two sinks in every classroom, one accessible and one deeper for project work. And then there are also built-in wardrobes. Very large windows, as you can see, to optimize natural daylight. And then on the south-facing windows, there is sun shades to control solar glare or exterior sun control. All, all of the rooms have pulled out roller sheets. Next, please. And then we just wanted to mention that this is getting very real, very fast. The work has already started as part of the early site package to accommodate the new circulation patterns that are going to exist on the Fort River site to allow construction to happen. There is already started a little bit of road widening at the north entrance, and the pattern will be a little bit different. Obviously, now with the south entrance closed and for construction only, buses will circulate around the back of the building, and cars will come in from the north, drop off in front of the building, and then exit at the same entrance that they came in. And that, that changeover is gonna start next month. And that, that brings us to the reason we're here, to discuss the details of the project, the proprietary items that are included in the project. And with that, I'll hand it over to Rick.
Thanks, Tim. I appreciate that this is an unusual ask, asking the school committee to vote on nuts and bolts. As Margaret mentioned, MSBA requires an elected body to vote on this. It might seem, well, of, of course, we can pick the materials and the equipment that we want, but under public instruction, the awarding authority is to, is to specify products that can be supplied and manufactured by at least three manufacturers, unless there is no, unless there is only one known product or feature that can meet the district's requirements. And that requires specifying a proprietary. And thus, we're before you to explain and ask that you vote that the following items be specified as proprietary items. We set around a more lengthy description, but starting with door hardware, one item is the Primus Schlage key system. This is a, called a secure key system. It is very difficult for unauthorized people to make copies. And it is used throughout the district and the other buildings. And this item is a very typical proprietary item for school districts with multiple buildings. The next items are more in the door hardware category, are basically the lock sets, the panic crash bars and the door closers. These, these are VaDUPRIN exit devices, Schlage interior door lock sets and LCN door closers. These are all items that are in use in the other district buildings. Specifying these as the only locks, door closers, panic devices would enable the district to repair these items, which are becoming certainly part of the security aspect of the building efficiently and quickly with, with materials that they're familiar with and spares that are on the shelf. So that's the door hardware. The building energy management system, the BMS, this is the computerized system that runs the HVAC system, and it is integrated with lights and security systems that basically all the digital systems operating modern buildings. The district currently uses a BMS system by ASI. And by specifying ASI as a system manufacturer for the new school would allow full seamless integration of all the school districts building for better central control and monitoring of the energy system and being able to keep track of energy use and optimize efficiency. The next items are trying to work together. One, and they have to do with the paging system. So the district currently uses Bogen-Nyquist paging system for the clock paging systems. And by specifying a Bogen system for the new project would maintain consistency with the existing equipment throughout the district and will streamline. And will streamline the management of the systems at various sites within the schools. And will reduce the overall cost of support of, of the PA and clock bell systems. Door access control. This is the card readers that will. Be at the principal entrances for staff at the main entrance. Their proximity readers are by Edtev is already in use. And this system would be extended to be used in the new building. And it will maintain consistency without the other, throughout the district. And it ensures that the access cards used by staff will work across the entire school system. So, and it will reduce again the overall cost of ongoing support and maintenance. The intrusion alarm system. Currently, the district uses system manufactured by DSC. Intrusion alarm are the door contacts in the motion detectors and. Again, a system that's used throughout the district. By specifying it proprietary, it will mesh with the other systems and it will be. Be able to be supported and maintained. And keep the district from running different systems in different buildings. Another security item is a video surveillance system. AVLAN software and servers, the cameras themselves are not proprietary, but the software and servers. Manufactured by AVLAN will maintain consistency with the VMS system installed as a standard within the town. And again, reduces the overall cost and ease of support. And those are building systems that are, that are really continuations of. Items that are already in use and already being maintained by the district. Next couple of items have to do with the playground and. One is the playground surfacing. We're asking that the school committee vote that a resilient play surfacing manufactured by Corkine. Be specified as proprietary. This is one of those cases where this is the only known product. That provides a fully accessible cushioning unitary surface for the playground. Surfacing, fully accessible, that does not contain. Chrome rubber or other compounds that have been identified as, as possibly being. Leachates and are environmental concerns. So after. A lot of discussion, this is the only surface. That is when we say accessible, it means that someone in a wheelchair could go. Anywhere on the playground without. Worrying about ruts or, or raking out wood chips. It provides cushioning for falls and. It's. Easier to maintain product. And the second element of the playground is the playground equipment itself. We had a, a very lively discussion, engaged discussion with stakeholders in the playground. Design who provided a lot of thoughts and, and, and gave us a lot of direction and. Playground equipment isn't really generic. Sure, everybody makes a swing, but once you get into the activities and the various levels of play. There's. Really no apples to apples between factors. We worked with. A installer manufacturer's rep, Emmy O'Brien. Who presented to the subcommittee on the playground design. Basing out on landscape structures, which provided wonderful play elements. Now. Emmy O'Brien and playground and landscape structures, playground equipment are on. The state bid list, which means the district could go out and buy that. Themselves without having to vote it proprietary or. Worrying about or equal. That's how furniture and equipment and, and a lot of the. Technology things are. But in order to get it fully integrated with the building construction, there is. Foundations needed for the playground equipment that have to coordinate with the drainage system and. The playground surface itself. It's our recommendation that. The, the playground equipment by landscape structure is distributed and installed by Emmy O'Brien. Be specified as a proprietary part of the construction project to. Have a really a single source of coordination between the various bits and pieces that being. The general contractor that ultimately is awarded the project. So that's kind of a. Bat overview. I didn't want to get too deep into the weeds. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you for the description. There is a, I believe everybody should have gotten a memo with more detail in their packet. We. Thought it would be good to give an overview. So that was what we had to present. I'm going to take the presentation down. And see if people have questions.
Yeah, I'd like first to let Deb Leonard say anything if she wishes, since she's our. Delegate to the elementary school building committee.
Well, I've only been on the project for a couple of months. It seems like everything is going along well. I did. Come in towards the end of the discussion about Corkine. So I, I guess my general question, I know it's being put to us for vote, but did the committee vote on it? And if so, what was the vote? Was it unanimous to?
So the committee took two different vote, the building committee took two different votes. The first vote was several months ago. When the committee was considering a choice between poured in place rubber. Which is actually what was, is in the documents now pending this sort of final decision to go with Corkine. Poured in place rubber, which is, you know, the kind of material you're probably most commonly seen as resilient surfacing on playground. Playgrounds because it's very widely used in what's called engineered wood chips or engineered wood fiber. And that was, that is engineered wood fiber was another alternative that the design team looked at. But the engineered wood fiber has a bunch of issues, including. The fact that it takes a lot more, it's a lot more maintenance and probably the biggest. Hang up from the building committee's perspective is it's, it doesn't provide as, as accessible a surface as poured in place rubber. At the end of that discussion, the, this issue of Corkine. Corkine was brought to the attention of the building committee and the design team. So as Rick said, it's a very new product in the marketplace. It, it does have the advantage that it is, it's made with, it's a cork by, it's, it's a byproduct of the port wind in Portugal. So. It's a natural product. So instead of using little pieces of rubber in a binder, it's using little pieces of cork in a binder. So it, the conservation commission discussed it and demonstrated a strong preference for it. And the, the building committee took a vote to. Give the design team the leeway to consider Corkine. So they haven't definitively said yes Corkine, but I think. The, because of the preferences of the, of the conservation committee that have been expressed. The choices are between Corkine and engineered wood fiber and the building committee has voted against engineered wood fiber.
So is it fair to say that? Well, if we, if we authorize that and I mean, probably all the items. Should we assume that Corkine will be used or is this simply giving the team the flexibility to choose that if there are still? Questions to be answered?
I would say that you are giving the team the flexibility to use it if the. Other permitting processes in Ameris point in that direction.
So I would like, I don't know if this is appropriate for, and you can tell me if it's not. The limit, well, it sounds like Corkine may be the only option, but eyes wide open going into this process. I think the committee should be aware of the fact that there is a disclaimer that we're going to be asked to sign by.
Yes. So the, the, the discussion so far. Has included a presentation and comments by Denisco Design and their landscape architect. Commenting that the, because this product is quite new in the marketplace, it's, it's been used. It's a very small area in a, a site in. Okay, McCarlisle and there's an installation going in, but it's new, you know, typically. I think the landscape architect said it quite well in the sense that, you know, he wouldn't typically specify a product. That hadn't been used in ten different places over twenty years, right? I mean, that's just. Sort of good common sense in terms of not. Providing something that's new and untested. So because the. Design team is, I would say, getting sort of pushed in this direction. And there's liability involved. They have provided a draft waiver of liability to the town, which is being reviewed. And so what they are looking for from the town is if this material is specified. That the, and there is an issue and the, the likely issue would be. Around the long-term performance of a material which doesn't have a track record in New England. Although it does have a track record in some Northern European countries like Sweden and Norway. It doesn't have a track record in the US. Doesn't have a lot of experienced installers in the US. So. Denisco is looking for a waiver of liability around the performance of the product. Is that Rick and Tim, am I accurately representing your perspective on that? Yeah.
All right. Are there, are there any other questions from the committee about Corkine, as long as we're on this particular item? Bridget, yeah.
So the first question I guess is, is this true for just the Corkine or do all the other items on the list? Not have that like ten to fifteen years of ten to fifteen different places sort of?
Yeah. So there's, there's no issue, there's no good question, Bridget. There's no issue, no comparable issue with the other products. The other products are available in the marketplace. Rick, I see you saying no. Is that? It's Corkine is the carve out here for being a new product in the marketplace.
Okay, the second, like the follow up, I guess I have on that is that you'd said the conservation commission suggested. And the other information that I saw said that they would not approve chrome rubber because of it being. Toxic and being so close to the Fort River watershed and bad for aquatic life, et cetera. And then there's, you know, the board of health. In town also didn't. Advised against Corkine and that, that's advisory, but my understanding is the Corkine's off the table with the board of health vote is that is.
No.
The poured in place rubber is off the table.
It's the poured in place rubber, yeah.
So we're really making a choice between Corkine and the engineer wood fibers. If we, you know, as, to be fair, your committee, I guess I could say like the, the school building committee, the planning board and the other. The other committee, like there's three other committees that have already been the timeless and gotten it to this place. So I don't want our group to overvote you on something else. I just want to understand the sort of choice you're making.
So the, it's, it's a good question again, Bridget. So there is. And I'll, I'll give the sequence. So the conservation commission. When we first met with them, expressed concerns about this and it's my understanding. That they've subsequently taken a vote, which we were not.
We have not seen, yeah.
We have not seen, we weren't told they were discussing it. So, but that's what we've heard. The Board of Health similarly had a, had us make a brief presentation about it and then again. Had a meeting we weren't aware of and voted an advisory opinion. That they did not want to see poured in place rubber used. So the planning, this isn't an issue with the planning department. They, the, the playground has been included as a sort of overall design, but the actual. Material is not something that they would weigh in. And however, we have completed. Our planning board review process and we're just waiting for their final, the final documentation.
Earth, see your hand up?
Yes. I, I guess I'd want to be very clear. Corkine is, is being put forward as the preferable product to be used. Because of votes by other town entities. However, Corkine seems to be a really untested material over time. And there's no evidence of its survivability over time. So I, I guess that. The contractors are concerned that if this product Corkine is used. That it may not be sufficient in terms of use over time. And want to have the ability to make a judgment at time of contract. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, let me sort of provide a little more context for this. So Corkine has, what, the product was first used in. Europe in 2016. So that makes it even in Europe, a relatively new product. And as I mentioned before. Most designers are understandably cautious about specifying. Materials that don't have a track record. So this is a situation where, again. No real significant New England installations, no, not many installers. So there are questions that the design team can't get to, get behind about the performance, the longevity of the material. And hence the waiver. So again, the material's been around since 2016. It just hasn't. In this area and there isn't much at all yet in the way of. People experience to the installation. I think that's going to change, but for the purposes of this project. We're dealing with what's on the table in front of us.
Let me have one follow up. If the people who install this and who, or who supply Corkine. Will they be offering any kind of warranties?
So, yes. So they, what they have said is if, if we use one of their. Licensed installers, there will be a five-year warranty. Rick and Tim, maybe you could speak to the typical warranty of the other options.
The poured in place rubber also has a five-year warranty. However, there are scores of documented installations in New England. That have lasted ten to fifteen years without degradation. So while they both have parallel. Initial warranties, it's the life after the warranty that also that no one's experienced.
So. It doesn't sound like we're being asked to choose a, a, a surface type. It sounds like we're being asked. It sounds like we're being asked to approve this proprietary corkine. It, it sounds like poured-in-place rubber is not an option, and engineered wood fiber is also not an option. So, corkine, I mean, from the little bit of research that I've done on it, it does sound like it has some history in Europe, extensive use in Scandinavia, and not as much use, or very little use in the U.S. So, we would be a little bit on the cutting edge of this material, but it sounds like it's going, I don't know, like, in five to 10 years from now, my guess would be that you'll see, you'll be seeing more and more corkine. And if it comes with the same warranty as the other types of materials, this seems like a solid choice.
I'd like to wrap up the discussion of this particular item soon. Deb?
So, yes, and, two questions. So, what happens if the entire company goes out of business? And what happens if the installer goes out of business in terms of repair and maintenance and things like that? Again, I'm not second-guessing any of these decisions, I just want to understand, understand the broader context of this particular one.
It's, it's a good question. The, my understanding is the warranty is coming from the manufacturer, so it's a little bit the way roofing works these days. So, that, you know, if a roofer, if you specify a roofing product that has a warranty and the roofer goes out of business, it's the manufacturer that owns the warranty. I believe this is the same situation.
Okay, but there's one installer in all of the East Coast, correct? Or is that, do I not?
So, right now, there is one licensed installer for the East Coast.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Can we move on to, or Bridgette, do you have something--
Can I just ask one clarifying question here? Because I, I don't think I was clear. I want to be clear. There's a contractor's warranty in terms of installation, et cetera. And then there's the warrant, a product warranty. So, I want to make sure that there is a contractor's warranty that's in place, and that there is a product warranty, because sometimes those things come to court, and they're in conflict with each other. The, the product person says, "Well, the contractor didn't install it correctly." So, I, I just want to make sure. Are we talking about both warranties or only one warranty?
Rick, do you want to, do you want to tackle that?
Like, the roof example that Margaret mentioned, there is a contractor warranty. In general, it's a year. And that's true on everything. And then there is the manufacturer's material and installation warranty, and that's one of the reasons why they, they warranty, the manufacturer warranties the product for five years. If, what do they call, Margaret, the master installer? One of their approved master installers installs the project, and--
Brand, it's the, they call it a brand master.
Grand master.
Brand.
Yeah. So, what the specification would have would be the manufacturer's warranty. And in the manufacturer's warranty language, there, and that would be the strongest possible warranty. You really cannot change a manufacturer's warranty by just saying something, it should be something else than what it is.
Thank you. Bridgette?
Okay. So, I just wanted to check in, I guess. What I'm thinking is the, the elementary school building committee asked that we, that they, that we, they include this after looking at it, because they turned down engineered wood fiber, and we have another town committee that's, that's denied the ability to use the other one. So, I think my concern is, I, if we didn't vote for it, one, would we be going against our fellow boards? But, you know, at least three of them, we know, prefer this surface. And then the second thing that I'm thinking about is the timeline. Would we interfere with your timeline if we don't give you this flexibility? Because I don't see where else you can turn, otherwise, you know, except back to the engineered wood, which, you know, nobody wants to leave kids out.
And can I, I heard you say, it's just two other boards, town boards are involved, not three. My, this is the last question on--
The elementary school building committee, the Board of Health, and the COMCON, right? Isn't that three?
Well, I mean, the, the Board of, the elementary school building committee asked those other boards.
Yeah.
So, all right.
They're in a, they're in a different category here--
Yeah.
--in terms of who's, who's sort of opining it. The, the elementary school building committee has not taken a vote on this product, where the other two have, have taken votes specifically on the product. That's the distinction.
I got it.
All right. So, the last question--
It's going to blow you down.
Sorry. Sorry, Bridgette. You're done? Yeah. Okay. The last question, I think, about this, this issue, is about the liability release or waiver, or whatever you said. And I don't know if it's the town that will sign that, or the school committee. Doesn't, doesn't really matter right now. But that is a release, that releases Denisco and the general contractor. Who's, who will be released from liability if there's a problem with this?
So, it would be Denisco would be released from liability for the performance of the product over time, not the contractor.
Okay. And they're, okay.
Because, again, the, all the contractor can provide is the five-year warranty, assuming the use of the licensed installer.
Right. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. Any questions on any of the other proprietary items? Deb? No?
You know, I just, I do want to add, the, these other, the corkine is a little bit in its own category. These other items that Rick and Tim have described and are, are in the memo, these are very, these are the very common issues around which communities usually do make decisions about the use of proprietary items. Because, as you can imagine, if you've got schools that are using materials that are different from what your operations folks and city departments use to interact with the building, it, it does cause real issues with school operations and safety.
Yes. My only question, and it's not even for Denisco or Margaret, is about this, the video surveillance. What video surveillance are we doing in our schools? Thank you, Doug.
I can answer that one. So, in our, in our secondary schools, we have, we have, we have cameras both inside and outside that help us, in circumstances, we have a whole policy regarding video surveillance. It's not, you know, the short story is, it's, it's not viewed, except in circumstances where we need to review it, and it's not viewed by anybody unless authorization by the superintendent. We probably want the Amerist School Committee to make a similar authorization of that policy. And it's currently set up, I believe, the, the camera systems for this building are external only, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
This, this meaning the new school?
Right. They're just external to the building. And so, again, for security around the exterior--
Vandalism.
Yeah.
It's, 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 excuse me, Doug, it's exterior, exterior cameras and cameras at the entrances.
Yes.
Of course. All right. Okay. I'd like, yes?
So, I'm ready to move to, I'd like to move to authorize Denisco Design to incorporate the specification of proprietary items as described in the presentation. Do I need to go through them individually? No.
No.
In the procurement documents for the Fort River Elementary School, because it is in the public interest to do so.
Second.
Thank you. And I would just amend, as described in the document, Amerist Fort River Elementary School 24-03-12. Do you two accept that?
Yes.
Amendment? Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's take the vote.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, as described in the document that you said, and then it says, in the procurement documents, but what, what are the, because I thought someone said that, like, for example, corkine wasn't in the original plan. So, like, what are the procurement documents, what this, what does that mean?
So, they're, they're the documents that we will go to bid with. I apologize.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Not, not the documents we have today, but what will be the basis of the procurement for the building project in the summer.
Because you'll instruct them to include these specific products?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Let's move to, to vote, then. Irv, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'm, yes. So, that passes five to zero. Before you all, Denisco and Margaret, leave, I want to just jump back to something you mentioned that's happening very soon, and that is the whole change to the traffic patterns in and around, and literally around the building. And I think I just want to ask the superintendent is, like, have, what the communication plan is to the community? Thank you.
I can speak to that, and, and Margaret, please jump in if I miss anything on this. So, so we've indicated that there's going to be a change in, in the circulation around the building in, in the last couple newsletters. In this week's newsletter, we'll probably get decidedly more specific. Some of the reason we've held off a little bit is, is getting firm dates for when we actually make the switch to the, to the new system. Just to announce that this evening, for no other reason. So, we'll actually make the switch on April 8th, which happens to coincide with the eclipse. But nonetheless, what will happen is, that's when we'll formally--
Tempting fate.
That's right. So, we'll formally close the south driveway, which is nearer to Southeast Street and, and Belcham Road. That will be purely for construction vehicles, and will remain that way through the entire construction process. As was noted tonight, once we open the new building, that will be for bus delivery, van traffic. But during construction, that will be explicitly and exclusively for construction only. If you've been by the site, the north driveway has been widened a little bit. There'll be paving next week. I was just in a meeting today where we talked about that in, in detail a little bit. And there's a number of other small, you know, paving improvements, not, some of them not so small, but, but some other improvements to prepare for when the southern end of the building and, southern end of the parking and space gets, gets fully blocked off. They're in process of doing that now. We're probably in, in some ways, in the most difficult circumstance right now, because they're in process of putting up fencing and erosion controls and preparing for this switch. And so, we're in this place where we're, we're trying to get and keep the equipment and, and work separated from kids, and we don't have quite all the barriers in place, so they're in process. But we'll be, like I said, there's, you know, some additional site work, and particularly paving, which will be the thing that people notice, that'll be kind of a full day or so of paving work that they do around the building. And then, and as we go through the process, we're going to, you know, strongly encourage people to carpool--
Take the bus.
Have their children ride the bus.
Take the bus.
We'll reach out to some of our school choice families around that as well, and we'll do some messaging specifically targeted to the, to the, to the Fort River community, but also to others, the Palms School Community, the Wildwood School Community, the UMass Community, the town as a whole. I have an email partially composed that I need to send to the folks at PVTA to remind them. I've warned them already, I'm going to give them the specific dates, because they have buses that run through that area. And it'll be most difficult, you know, in the morning at, at drop-off and, and the afternoon at pickup. So, we're trying to, you know, message out and be targeted with some aspects of the messaging, but we definitely want to strongly encourage any and all that have a bus route to have their child ride the bus. And if you can avoid those, that stretch of roadway in the mornings, that might be wise, because you'll probably run across a fair amount of traffic. There'll be physical signs going up in and around in advance of, of the switchover to, you know, indicate that the changes are going to happen. You know, some message boards, much like we see around the beginning of school at UMass, they, when they have the, you know, the days when they have students move on campus. So, that's similar kind of messaging around the, the fiscal areas. We'll have police officers, you know, on Southeast Street, helping to direct traffic, getting people in and out as the change. And then, of course, you know, there's a fair amount of, of staff that do, you know, management of, of pickup and drop-off with, with kids and, and with families. We'll, we'll have that. It'll be altered, obviously, because of the nature of the, the pickup and drop-off will be different, but, but there will be a fair amount of staff that'll be partnering, you know, on our campus to, to make sure things go smoothly and safely. And I'm sure the first week will be really difficult, and we'll learn a whole bunch, and we will then have a week off because of April vacation, and we'll modify accordingly as, as we go. And I don't know if, Margaret, do you have anything else you want to add relative to that, or?
Well, yeah, totally agree. I mean, it, it's been a kind of all-hands-on-deck conversation within the town about how to sort of get messaging out. And we were kind of waiting for tonight to share this with you. I do want to point to a couple of things. First of all, I think what, what Doug said about taking, encouraging people to get their kids on buses as an opportunity here, I think is, is a real plus for multiple reasons. If, if folks don't already know, there is a website for the project, and I'm just, just going to share a couple of project pages so that you can see, if you need to know what the heck is going on, you need a really quick look. So, the, the address for the site is amerist-school-project.com, right? This is a webpage that is managed by us, by Answer Advisory. And what we're doing right now is, right up at the top of the page, in red, is a couple of lines about what's going on on site this coming week. Okay? And then, we've also, just today, on the FAQ page, we've started to, this actually isn't fully updated yet, but we started to provide an update on the traffic circulation, including the image that Doug, that Tim and Rick shared earlier. So, and I think we're probably going to end up doing a recording and sharing with PTOs, you know, that we have a subcommittee, what I would call a communications subcommittee, that includes myself, Angela Mills, in the town manager's office, and Tammy, as well as Debbie, Westmoreland here, who we all depend on for helping us figure out how to communicate. So, just to let you know, again, if you want a really quick place to kind of see what's going on in the coming week, just go to that page, and there's an update. It's the same update that's going in the superintendent's newsletters on Friday, and it's going to be going out through town channels. So, we're just trying to make sure as many people know about this right now as possible.
Right. Great. What, yes?
And while we have these good folks here, maybe just quickly, I know it's late in the whole process, but if you could speak briefly to the issue of what is going to be different about the bottom part of the building in terms of the fill and the barrier and all the issues related--
You mean the foundation?
To, to, to mediating against the flooding.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't really talk about that. Rick and Tim, I think Sarah's question is around, you know, the fact that the site's been sort of swamped for a long time, and--
Yes.
--this project is really going to address that? Is that right, Sarah?
Yeah.
Is that--
Yep. So, just briefly, you know, the water table is a given, and what you're reacting to is the fact that the water table, depending on rain events, can be pretty close to the surface. So, first, the new building, the floor level of the new building will be two feet higher than the existing floor level. So, that raises the whole building out of, further up above the water table. And with it, the site, even the, the new athletic fields, will be a foot, a foot and a half taller than they are now. And then, both, the building has something underneath the slab, a stone layer with drainage, and that, and that does two things. It will drain away moisture if it rises, and also provides a capillary break so that groundwater doesn't, through capillary action, make its way up to the underside of the floor. Plus, there is a vapor barrier under the, the floor slab, which is not something that existed in 1973. So, all, that and the, and the drainage are all elements. So, it's elevation, drainage, capillary break will alleviate the, mitigate the, your moisture concerns.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much for coming and being patient with us as we get our, the rest of our business done. We can't wait to see the school or see the, see all the digging. We can't wait to see the school or see the see all the digging start. So and Margaret, maybe you can speak to Debbie about the documentation you need from the vote. We probably don't formally approve the minutes for another month when we next meet. If you need something sooner than that, we'll figure out how to do it.
No, that should be fine. Rick and Tim, I think we need to put it in the ninety percent submitted, right? So that that's not for a month or so. So that's fine.
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good night. All right, can we keep going into the budget or do people want to need a break? All right, let's move ahead then to new and continuing business fiscal year twenty-five Amherst budget vote. Doug, do you think you can share your screen yet?
I'll try.
Okay.
So what I've done in the in the attachment to the to the agenda is um update some things you've seen recently. And let's see if it behaves and actually displays online. Dramatic pause while it thinks about it. No, it will not.
Budget, uh budget. Bridgette, can you bring up the budget and share your screen?
Yeah. So we'll let her share it and then I will
Yeah.
in the room, I'll share it differently just because it'll it'll.
Well, we have no audience and I think all of us have our own copies, so.
Here we go. All right, so let's uh scroll to the first page, um which is is a recap of of so the first page of the of the document I I shared with you is is a sort of consolidated uh expense budget. What I have done here in in the fiscal twenty-five column is to adjust it relative to the additions, changes, reductions uh that will be shown on the second page. Uh, so those numbers that you see in that column are just a little bit different in some places from what you saw before. Uh, and if we go to page two, what I've done is taken this this roster of things that we've shared uh in the previous meeting and then, of course, uh restored those things that that are funding, additional funding from the town of Amherst allowed for. So um, I'll start with the simplest ones, which is in the bottom section, which is the budget reductions. Um, I'm just gonna switch back for a second. Yeah. In the budget reduction section, basically, the the positions, uh, professional staff, this professional uh special education teaching staff, the instrumental music teaching staff and the para educator positions that were were formerly in the reductions have been zeroed out. Um, along with that, there was a small amount of money for staff turnover. So when we reduce staff, we often reclaim some other uh resources. So that was also zeroed out. Those are the primary changes there. We're going to continue to make the the other changes in central office administration uh in in our custodial reduction. Those are those are appropriate for the for the uh change from the pandemic. And then the administrative uh changes are ones we've we've talked about and and a shrinking of the central office staff to help reduce the uh the overall ask. Uh, the other change I'll point out is is in the um, it's in the top section, the adjustment section. Uh, we have a shift intensive needs program administrator to revolving fund. Basically, what I did there was I reduced the amount that's going to get shifted to that revolving fund, which preserves it for longer. Um, we had a a little residual amount of of funding in in the in the of that the town gave us. And so that was where I made the other adjustment. Um, and then again, that just preserves that revolving fund for for use later on. Uh, it was a bit of a stretch to take it as far as we did. We could have. It would have been fine. And it's easier to use less of it. Um, and gives us greater flexibility in in future years. So those are the the primary changes there. Um, and so I think at the bottom of that uh of that second page, I actually have a formal motion for you which just states the the totality of the budget, which matches with the funding that's available from the town of Amherst, uh given their adjustment on the sixteenth of February.
Thank you. So why don't we have that motion in a second and then we can ask any questions? Jennifer?
I move to adopt a budget of twenty-six million nine hundred seventy thousand four hundred nineteen dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-five for the Amherst Elementary School District.
Second.
Thank you, Irv. Okay, so um may I ask a question first and then? Just to be clear for the public, this budget takes full advantage of that extra one percent of funding from the town of Amherst.
That's correct. It's a four percent increase from the current year.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I just wanted to say thank you to Doug for restoring the special educator, instrumental music and preschool para educator positions, and I plan to vote yes.
Bridgette or Irv, any questions or comments?
None for me.
I'd just share also that I have a lot of appreciation for everyone's patience and hard work in the process. And also, I'm a yes vote on this budget.
All right, well, we're not quite there, but thank you. Uh, Deb?
I will be voting yes. And I do want to say yes to everybody's patience and also to the um the people who are being squeezed in central office. We appreciate their efforts.
Yes. Uh, and um, of course, thanks to all the community members who who came in person or submitted comments and or left phone messages. I know we're glad to be able to do this. All right, let's uh call the vote. Bridgette?
Aye.
Irv?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that passes unanimously. Fabulous. All right, um, let's go first to warrants.
I do have four warrants. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of three hundred sixty-one mil three hundred sixty-one thousand one hundred seven dollars and twelve cents for the warrant dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. This includes general fund expenses of one hundred six thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-nine cents, revolving fund expenses of seventy-seven thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-one cents, grant fund expenses of seventy-two thousand six hundred fifty dollars and ten cents, and gift gift fund expenses of one thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and capital fund expenses of one hundred two thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-two cents. Next. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature payables in the amount of seven hundred eighty thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents for payroll dated three six twenty-four. Two more. I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents for the warrant dated March eighth, twenty twenty-four. This includes general fund expenses of one hundred seven thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and fifty-six cents, revolving fund expenses of thirteen thousand five hundred ninety dollars and fifty-eight cents, grant fund expenses of thirty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars seventy-nine cents, and capital fund expenses of twenty-three thousand one hundred thirty-four twenty-three thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. And lastly, I Jennifer Shaw authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand ninety-six dollars and ninety-six cents for payroll dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. All right, I see we also have uh some gifts to accept. And we don't, none of our committee members are assigned to gifts, right?
We just, we just.
Yeah, I so I'm, is it Doug? Is it you who puts this into the?
So typically, it just comes to the treasurer.
Right, okay.
The formal process. But once that happens, it's just a motion by the the committee to accept the gifts.
Okay.
No, it's your choice, but we usually like to take them.
I move to accept the gifts. Uh, do I specify?
Yes, please.
Martha, over to Crocker Farm at principal's discretion for ten dollars. Catherine slash Robert Lowry, Crocker Farm sixth grade for five hundred dollars.
For a total of?
For a total of five hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I I actually do have a question. Um, I didn't see the gifts until I logged in to my board docs account. So but I think they they're supposed to be posted publicly. So if we could make a note to post them publicly next time.
Yeah, I think I think it may have happened today, but.
I think it was late.
But yeah, I I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Oh, who, Irv? No.
I didn't put my hand up.
Maybe Debbie did.
Oh, Debbie. Debbie, is your hand up?
Yeah, it is. I just wanted to let you know, I added the gifts because they came in from the treasurer at around five.
Okay.
So I figured it'd be great if you guys could go ahead and accept them tonight.
Yes. Can't believe we'd ever say no. Um, all right, so let's let's vote. Bridgette?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you. All right, um, agenda planning. Uh, you're always welcome to send ideas for the agenda to me at any time. I will say that, just let you know, that two items we have for our May agenda so far are an update from the superintendent on the sixth grade move issues that we um handed to him in March. And also hopefully, an update on kindergarten enrollment. And actually, I guess there's potentially a third on school choice seats, how many seats there may be available, if that is yet known.
I think we should start the discussions about redistricting with the the public. Start telling them that.
Well, we've, I wait, wait. We haven't yet been shown any projections that we when when we have data to help us understand what might need to be done, we'll have that discussion.
So you're saying we shouldn't tell the public that redistricting is on the horizon until we know that for sure?
I, if someone asked me any questions about it, I couldn't really give an answer yet. So I mean, Doug, do you have anything to to say?
I think the only thing I would say relative to that, and I want to be a little careful not to go too far without it being on the agenda, but uh, I think that 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 there are a couple of pieces to the puzzle. One is about sixth grade move, which has an impact on on transportation and potentially on on redistricting. I think the second thing is um regardless of of how it plays out, I think that, you know, we should be considering and thinking about the 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 new building uh and its impact will be a holistic district-wide impact, how that will play out relative to where we, you know, draw the lines. I I think to simply say we're going to take Fort River and Wildwood and just mush them together and call it the new school, I think is not really how we'll approach it. We'll take a holistic look at at that. And and there'll be a number of things that that US School Committee may want to weigh in on and we as as uh administration may want to offer a suggestion. So I think it'll be a holistic approach. Um, so I think there's it 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 won't be as simple as just sort of merging two buildings together. It'll be more than that. And and there's a whole host of of pieces to that to that work. And that's uh some stuff that we're getting underway as we speak.
Okay, so I will check back with the superintendent and if if we have enough information to have a sensible discussion about.
So families are going to need to know.
Absolutely. It'll be a process.
That it's coming and the sooner the better.
Right.
Okay.
Yes. So just keep bringing it up.
I will do that.
Thank you. Any any other suggestions? All right. Unless there's something I've forgotten or there's some light breaking news, we can um have a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second. All right. It's not debatable. Um, Irv?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. We are adjourned.